I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we come together as the county commission, we ask your guidance in today's business. Keep us mindful of the duties we're responsible to the taxpayers and citizens of our county. Also, Father, we give thanks for this wonderful country we live in. Celebration of our Independence Day yesterday, we truly are blessed to be part of this great country. We continue to ask your guidance on our leaders and the days and the years to come. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Duane. Yes, we are blessed to be in the country we're in, and even though there's times where we have disagreements, definitely are blessed. I don't have any additional comments. I would ask, though, before we start the agenda, you see, Board members, you see what's before us on our agenda today? Is there anything that you want to add or need to add, or anything to the agenda? If not, we'll move right into the things at hand. And the first is the consent agenda. We've got some minutes and accounts payable on there, fairly routine. What is the Board's desire?
Mr. Chairman, I move we pay the accounts.
That's okay. It's, it's, it was a late night with, with all the fireworks. There is a motion to approve consent agenda items. Is there a second?
I will second then.
Seconded by Dave. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is public comment. That's for anything that's not on our agenda. And anyone in the audience want to make public comments? I guess not. So we'll move right into the business items. And McKenzie, you're first up today. You have a resolution about some rezoning for us to consider?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we have before you a consideration for a rezone for the property generally located at 3112 West Katherine Drive. The applicant, Susanna Prieto, is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 3112 West Katherine Drive from G C General Commercial District to R R Rural Residential District. There's currently a single-family home on the property that was built around 1981, and the property has historically been used for residential purposes. Ms. Prieto would like to rezone the property to build a large accessory structure on the property. The property is currently non-conforming. Residential dwellings are not a permitted or conditional use within the G C General Commercial District. As defined in the Fannie County zoning regulations, a non-conforming use is any law or structure lawfully occupied by use at the time of the effective date of the zoning regulation or amendments heretofore, which does not conform with the regulations of the district in which it is situated. The Fannie County zoning regulations do allow for non-conforming uses to continue, provided that there aren't any structural alterations, except those required by law or resolution, and that the non-conforming use is not discontinued or abandoned for a period of one year. The addition of the proposed residential structure would increase the nonconformity of the property unless it is rezoned. If the governing body chooses to approve the proposed rezoning resolution, any adjacent properties within the G C General Commercial District, developed in the future for commercial purposes, will be required to provide a buffer strip in accordance with Section 13.090 of the Fannie County zoning regulations. Within Section 13.9090, it requires a five-foot buffer strip in addition to the required 10-foot setback, which would be a total of 15 feet, and would be required to put a permanent fence. All the properties surrounding that are currently zoned general commercial are either used for residential purposes, or they're vacant. So in this case, if it was a residential property, they wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be required to put up that fence or have that buffer zone unless it was used for commercial purposes. And same with the vacant property. The proposed use of this property as residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan/future land use of potential, land use potential of mixed use. And the governing body may approve the request according to the criteria in Section 27.040, which is listed below in your packet. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request at the June 16, 2022 meeting. There were seven members present, and the motion passed, seven to zero. There are three alternatives before you today. The first is the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. Two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard McKenzie's presentation with regard to this rezoning issue. I'll open it up to questions and comments from the Board, and I'm going to look to Dave first.
I have no questions. It looks like the Planning Commission did a thorough job of examining and a good recommendation, so that's it.
Duane?
I have no questions.
Larry? And Bob?
Yeah, just clarification again on the contiguous property. Right now, they're all commercial. And if they came to you for a development, if this is placed into rural residential, then that buffer area would apply. Instead of a five-foot setback, there would be a 15-foot.
So there is two properties currently that are zoned G C General Commercial, one to the west and one to the south. The one to the west is currently residential, so if that was developed in the future for commercial purposes, then they would be required to do that buffer zone and put up a fence. Now, they would be able to come and ask for a waiver if they would like to, to not have to do that buffer and fence, so.
And the same way on the south?
Same way on the south. That one is currently vacant, and that one's already bordering a rural residential district. So to the, the one to, the property to the west is currently rural residential, so it would be the...
There should be no major impact on the contiguous properties. That would be a major burden.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
And I have no questions. And so what we're being asked to do is, if we are in favor of this, is to approve a resolution, and I believe the number is 33. Is that correct, Dory? 33-2022. What's the Board's desire?
I move that we approve this zoning request.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Duane to approve Resolution 33-2022. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, McKenzie. Appreciate that. Next on the agenda, we have our county councillor presenting to us with regard to a developer's agreement for the Western Kansas Corridor. For those who may not be aware, this is a development up north of the bypass to the east of the truck stop, is what I still call it. No, we're not, not supposed to do that, but I don't know what else it is. So Linda?
Good morning. Thank you. This morning, we are presenting to you the proposed developer agreement with Western Kansas Corridor. This proposal has been through myself and through the attorney for the developer, and both of us have finalized this and believe it's in our, in its final form, and would ask for the commission's approval.
I would just simply ask, and then I'll open it up to the other four, Robert and Linda both, any particular things that are outside the norm of the developer's agreement that you would consider?
No, not really on this one. No.
So let's go to Larry first. Any questions or comments? Bob?
Yeah, could we roll to the basically overview of the property? We, the developer's agreement always talks about phase one. Is phase one pretty much the everything that's in the bold line, or is it a subsection of that?
That is probably a question for planning office. I mean, I...
It is, it's that L shape, just south of the, just south of the road, entrance road.
Okay.
Going in, it's that L shape going to the east. There you go.
Yeah. All right, so that picks it up. All right, so if there is further development, then there would be a subsequent development agreement that would pick up. And then I noticed that the city of Garden City is part of that agreement, but that's strictly under the TIF relationship. Is that correct?
Correct. So, so there's also another agreement that's going to go along with this, and that's going to be the TIF agreement. It's a three-way agreement between the developer, the city, and the county. And of course, the repayment, all of that structure goes through the city's infrastructure as opposed to the county's.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Duane?
I guess the only observation I noted was, most of this deals with the developer. Not a lot of county responsibility labeled out, I didn't see.
That, that would be a fair way to say it. You know, of course, some of that infrastructure will be maintained by the county ultimately. But you're, you're correct, primarily that's going to fall on the developer. And, and since a lot of this, because it's a TIF, is going to be overseen by the city, some of, some of maybe that is going through the, the city's attorneys and the city's agreements.
It also seemed to me the planning department is heavily involved.
Oh, yes. Yes, yeah. And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't thank them for their constant assistance with regard to this project.
Thank you.
Dave?
Not really a question, maybe more of a comment. Does this then turn Tim loose to start moving dirt? And is this what everybody's been waiting on?
This is one of the steps. As you, as you're aware, that they had to get answers from KDOT, and I believe that's resolved now. They're working out some issues on Water District right at the moment. We do have a review of the sewer, sewer plans for that infrastructure. But yes, it's, it's moving along. Let's see, once you sign off on the developer's agreement, then they would be required to execute that as well.
Correct.
And then there's some assurances within that developer's agreement that they have to meet.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so what we're being asked for today is to approve the developer agreement and authorize myself as the signer of that agreement. So what is the Board's desire?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this development agreement as presented today.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Duane, seconded by Bob. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Linda. Next thing on the agenda is to hopefully present something to the city. I put on the, on your desk, a two-page document, and that I'm proposing with regard to this wildlife services thing. And for the purposes this morning, Gabby or whoever's running the computer, you can go to page four, would be fine, of that document. But I've written a one-page summary of what I'm suggesting. And to preface that, at the city commission meeting the other day, they voted to, the vote was to ask the county for a proposal for them to consider. And so I felt like we needed to come up with something. So today, I'm bringing to you a proposal, and then see what your desire is, and based on that, we'll go forward. The first few paragraphs, I've just simply recapped some things that have been said in the past with regard to the bird mitigation issue. And then toward the bottom, I've restated option one, word for word, from the document that we received from Jason Klauff, from the USDA Wildlife Services. And then you had instructed me to gather some additional input, and I have done that from some businesses and some hospitality places in Fannie County. I've only seen one negative written comment about it, and it was just simply, don't we have bigger issues to take care of? And quite frankly, yes, we do have some bigger issues too, that I can't disagree with that statement. But we've, we have had a number of businesses and residents within Fannie County ask us to do something about the bird issue. So at the bottom of the page, the other thing you asked me to do was come up with some kind of a funding thing, where the county is not funding the entire proposed amount, but we find some partners. And so I'm proposing to you today that the, the proposal was approximately 90,000. That could change, because that was done a couple of months ago. So that could change a little bit, so I've got a little bit of leeway in there. But that Fannie County fund 25,000 of the approximate 90,000. We asked the city to fund 25,000 of the approximate 90,000. And we asked CVB, because hospitality is, is affected by this quite a bit, to fund 10,000. However, CVB would gather those funds. And the remaining 30,000, and I would, I'm more than willing to take the lead on this, would be a search for some private funds, whether it be feedlots or businesses, or ones that are, are affected. But the, the, as I've said in the, in the sentence before that funding option, USDA Wildlife Services only contracts with one entity. And I threw it out there to Jason Klauff, would it be okay to contract with CVB? Because it, and visiting with Robert, it could cause the county some budget, oh, what's the word I want to use?
Authority.
Authority. It could cause some concerns with regard to our budget authority if we're the contracting entity. City may have the same issue. I don't know. And Jason has checked with his superiors in his organization, and they find that to be an appropriate contract entity. And I have mentioned that to Roxanne, head of CVB. And so we have a question yet, whether CVB, through their auditors and so forth, would be permitted to do that. So that's a question out there. And then certainly, there's a question, even if the first three pieces of the funding were in place, a question on whether there's the private, private participation. And if one of those pieces falls apart, this project is either over, or I come back to you with an alternative plan. But, so there's some contingencies here, even with the proposal that I'm presenting to you today. But it felt like it was time to put something in a proposal form, and the city definitely is looking for us to present a proposal to them, based on their motion and, and adopting that motion the other day. So with that, I'm going to stop, and if there's some questions I need to answer, or see what the Board's desire is with regard to the proposal. So Dave, let's start with you.
Well, I'd stated in a previous meeting that I would not support the county going alone, but I would consider supporting, if we had partners. And so it looks like, Mr. Chairman, you've done a good job of developing at least an offer. And so I would be supportive of that offer, if it's accepted by the other entities.
Okay. Duane?
I guess I'm going to have to take the position of the input I've had from my contacts and to vote against it. I do not feel that this is something that we need to be part of, so I guess that's where I'm going to stand with that one.
Okay. Larry?
With the breakdown of the monies, it appears to me that this, this whole issue is, is, needs to be driven by the businesses or CVB, since they're the ones that are affected the most. And that's the ones we've gotten the comments from. I, you know, if CVB wants to take it out of their budget, I have no problem with it. I don't, I'm kind of like Commissioner Grease, that using county funds for this, I have a little heartburn over that one.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I guess I would pretty much tag along on that. I, I look at it from the standpoint that the complaints that we have received have very much been driven by hoteliers. And, and then the business people kind of fall in this last piece. I would look at this from the standpoint that the city and the county are already contributing, if you will, through the guest tax, which comes in from those people. And I would think the cooperative arrangement might be that the CVB use their monies that they have accumulated over the past few years, and take on the responsibility of the city and the county and their portion, so that being 50,000. And then the rest of the money, if possible, raised from the other business communities. I think something like that I could support, but I don't think I could support this distribution the way it's there.
And Robert, you had mentioned one time, source of funds that we might be able to use, was it, and I don't, I really don't remember, but was it from general fund, or was it from ARPA funds, or if, if...
We would have the latitude.
And I, and I hear what is being said here. I'm not trying to argue that point, but...
The county would have the latitude to utilize either of those resources.
Okay. Okay. So...
One more comment. The only problem, you know, if we, if we'd use ARPA funds, this is a one-time solution, you know, one-time, one-year event. You know, if you want this program to continue, it looks, appears to me that you're going to have to have several years of this to even make an effect upon the bird situation. So, you know, I hate to say, well, let's fund it for one year and see what happens. They'll probably be back.
No, that's a logical observation. Yeah. No question about that. So any other comments before I ask a question? So what you're saying to me is that you would prefer I not present this to the city in the format that it is today? Is, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, I would say that, yes.
I, if, you know, I, my opinion is, if you want CVB to drive this thing, I think, you know, if they want to drive it with, with organizing and using their monies, that's fine.
Might have to speak to that. I am the representative to the CVB board. There is quite a bit of interest from the hoteliers on this issue, because they do have a problem. I kind of got a feeling, though, with their budgets already presented, that they're not going to be too excited about all of a sudden having something like this flopped in front of their budget, because it's pretty well spoken for. So if you, if we do put it back on the convention visitors lap, I, it's probably going to get delayed, because their budget's already worked up.
Even if they're using funds that are past years that they've accumulated and have in cash reserves?
They do have that funds. I'm not going to deny that, but that's, it's their decision. I'm not going to presume to make that for...
Thank you for that comment.
I have really nothing additionally to add. I'm not terribly excited one way or the other, of this being pretty obvious about it, but if the community supported it, I wouldn't vote against it, so.
Well, I know we have several business owners that are very interested in it, and so let me, from this discussion today, we'll take no action, but let me offer to go out and, and do some additional research with those businesses, as well as with CVB. And, and then if we find no interest there, then the subject will be dropped. But if we find some interest that might alter the funding mechanism, we'll go from there, so. Anything else? I appreciate your consideration. Appreciate the comments, and we'll do some additional legwork. All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution with regard to our work comp insurance. And Robert, I think you're taking the lead on that.
Could you pull up that resolution, please? Thank you. Before you, for your consideration today, you have a resolution which will provide the county to participate in the K work, workers' compensation pool. County went and looked... Workers' Compensation Pool. County went and looked at a proposal for them last year, and again this year on Workers' Compensation Pool. I think you saw a summary of those savings for that in your, in your packet, approximately a little over fifty-nine thousand dollars, or a twenty-ninth percent reduction in your workers' compensation insurance coverage for the county. Some of you may know a little bit of the history with K-Work. They are a pool that is set up under Kansas statutes that allows them to really focus their effort on providing workers' compensation for counties across the state of Kansas. They have an excess of eighty counties in the state of Kansas now participating in that, in their pool. They also provide through K-Camp, the various property and casualty assurances as well. And I think that's something perhaps that the county may want to take a peek at next year as well, and see if there's any opportunities or savings in that regard. So in essence, before you is the consideration of the resolution, and along with that, the bylaws. Past the resolution, you'll be authorizing the chairman to sign both documents on behalf of Fannie County. Any questions for me? Your current insurance with property and casualty shall remain with Iron for this year beginning July one, and that premium is approximately four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand. It reflects approximately a nine percent increase over last year.
Dave, we'll start with you.
Well, I'm not an insurance specialist by a long ways, but didn't we have under the, in the old days, if you will, our workers' compensation coverage from the same provider as the county's liability and so on? And wasn't there some, some rationale in the package deals being the most cost-effective? Is that concept gone away?
For the most part, yes. There's no reflection that your increase, your insurance rate will increase on your property and casualty, because you've separated out the, the workers' compensation aspect of it. It will not, it will not reflect that.
Okay. And, and the rates are still based on the work experience of our, of our workforce?
That's correct, yeah. What's known as the MOD rating.
All for saving money. I think it's a good idea. But is this a continuing resolution, or is there a timeframe on this resolution?
We need to, we need to go ahead and, and enter into this resolution. Now, we've, our, our insurance has lapped the end of June, so we, MS, then have rolled over the liability, property, and casualty insurance, under Iron Insurance now, and agreed to go with, with K-Work at this point.
But this is not, we, we don't have to renew this annually, I mean, this resolution, this is a.
You should, no, you shouldn't have to renew the resolution annually.
That's what I meant.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead.
What you just said, Robert, is our current workers' comp has lapsed.
Correct. It, it, it ends the middle of the year, June thirty. And so July one.
But, but we, we, we've got the coverage.
Under K-Work, correct.
As the resolution. It's a formality to have the resolution, but they bound the coverage July first.
Okay, thank you.
K-Work.
Question, you know, my business that I'm involved with, we're, participates in a worker comp pool, and that pool provides a lot of safety issues or safety services. Does K-Work do this kind of stuff, too?
Absolutely. They'll come out on an annual basis, oftentimes up to three times a year, and walk through your various buildings and so forth, and provide you insight on, on ways to create a much safer work environment. They also conduct your, and did during the COVID, conducted driver safety training. And even though we were not a part of them during the 2020 year, they still came out and assisted us and kept us up to date on a lot of our training aspect of it. And so they'll, they will then reach out to your emergency manager, Paul here, to help develop a more robust safety initiative here for the county, which I know that Paul is working on with a safety committee here within the county.
Good. I'm, I'm kind of like Commissioner Dris, you know, anytime we can save sixty-thousand dollars, I think, you know, that's, that's pretty good savings.
And it does help offset some of the increase we have, if you will, with the other, with the other.
Yeah, our, you know, our general liability has gone up twenty percent, and our, you know, it's just, all of them are up double digits, basically.
Yeah. But when we look at our total insurance package, it helps us a little bit. So, Bob?
Yeah, I think it, basically in answering Dave's question, I think that's really been the trend in our industries of insurance now, has been looking at each one of these to stand alone. And I really liked your comments to Larry's question in terms of availability of safety experts. Does, do they work with emergency management to give them quote-unquote "safety" topics that then become required safety training in every part? Our business gets a lot better rating if they have a safety system and a safety program in place. And I'd really like to hear that. That was good.
Yes, they do. They, they actually will work with whoever that county's contact is, and here in Fannie County, that has been our emergency manager director, and help initiate a formal safety standard and program within the operations.
Has the county been involved in one of these pools before?
Yep.
Has the county been involved in the pool?
I don't know. The eight years I've been here, it's been with.
It's been.
Well, we had, I may be an error. We had EMC forever. It covered everything, liability and workers' comp, and then, then we, you know, so.
I am familiar with the pool, I've been involved with them.
And you are comfortable with the language about withdrawal?
Absolutely.
If, for some reason, after a couple of years, it's not working well, we can get out of this without a horrendous penalty?
Correct.
That's the downside of a pool?
Correct.
Okay. But, and your number was, there's approximately eighty of the hundred and five counties that are involved in this?
Actually, I think it's in excess of eighty. In the southwest region, right now, with Fannie County joining the pool, I believe there's only three counties in the southwest region that is not a part of the workers' compensation.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
And I don't have any additional questions or comments, so I would ask for the board's recommendation on this resolution, which appears, Dory, there's going to be thirty-four-dash-twenty-twenty-two?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to approve Resolution thirty-dash-twenty-twenty-two.
Thirty-four.
Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-four, yeah.
That's all right.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Larry. Any further comments or discussion? If not, all in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, the, the rest of our agenda is going to be, the two items are, that are on the schedule are, with regard to wages, which Kelly's going to lead us in that discussion. And then we'll head into the budget, which Robert will lead us on after we've heard Kelly's presentation with regard to pay scale.
So this morning, I'm here to present some information and ask the board to consider during this annual budgeting process, to consider an updated pay scale and an across-the-board wage address, adjustment, whether it be market, with slight compression adjustments, or cost-of-living adjustments. If four of you will recall, and Commissioner Kreitzer, for your information, beginning in the fall of 2018, the board approved a wage study to begin by the Arnold Group, which was inconcluded and adopted in the summer of 2019. That wage study provided pay increases to bring forty employees to the new base. Fourteen of those forty were negligible as they serve in temporary on-call seasonal positions. But the remaining six employees increases resulted in just over forty thousand dollars. We then addressed about twenty percent of compression with an additional fifty-six employees at a wage cost of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars annually. The pay study at that time revealed that pay was competitive overall, but some positions did lag behind, thus being the ones that were adjusted. While other positions had been found to have accelerated earnings, this was mixed with no established or proper oversight of an adopted pay scale or pay policy, and that was the reason for the compression issues that at that time we could only address about twenty percent of. The pay study resulted in the current pay scale and pay policy that we use today. That is page one of what you've been provided. So forward to today, and the increased challenges that Fannie County is having with recruitment and retention, that seem to have elevated significantly over the past year and a half or since COVID. Although Kansas Governor Laura Kelly on June twentieth of this year reported a celebration that Kansas hit the lowest unemployment rate in the state's record history at just two-point-three percent, conversations with my peers at multiple agencies within the community have left us stumped by what has been termed "the great resignation", yet the lack of employment applications being received and low interest in employment opportunities being offered. By no means is Fannie County the only employer struggling with recruitment and retention. Today, Fannie County has approximately sixty vacant budgeted positions and a total population of two-hundred-and-seventy-five staff. Sixteen of these are classified as temporary on-call seasonal employees. Four are classified part-time and receive no benefits, leaving two-hundred-and-fifty-five full-time employees to provide services across eighteen departments. Just one year earlier, the total employee population was three-hundred-and-eleven. In the past six months, fifty-one employees have left Fannie County. Forty-one left voluntarily due to various reasons. Three retired, and seven were involuntary. Communication with our staff has provided that the low staffing levels are resulting in burnout, therefore we are seeing increased absenteeism, and ultimately some resignations due to burnout. Although I do understand and have data provided by some employees who have left voluntarily with us, pay appears to be the number one reason, followed by being underappreciated by their leadership, and then limited professional development or room for growth within their departments. With pay not being the only reason for the problems that we are facing, it is one that we can focus on immediately, while we then shift the focus to the culture of the organization and addressing the other challenges that we face. I do believe our reputation is due immediate attention in all areas, so although today I'm asking you to review wages, the next focus will be on culture, as also brought up prior by Commissioner Kreitzer and Commissioner Dave Jones. As I do participate in most interviews for talent at Fannie County, we are constantly seeking the approval of the county administrator to hire within or at the first quartile of the current pay scale as allowed by current policy. Infrequently, we do ask for just over the first quartile due to proven relevant extended experience. As job offers were being declined more often than not, conversations with other department directors and the county administrator shifted focus to looking at our current pay scale and wages, and then conversations with my peers on wages to increase these wages for recruitment and retainment of talent. We do have a structurally reasonable pay scale that over time has become ineffective due to the market. The prior pay study also made recommendation to adjust the pay scale every two to three years to keep with the market, and so just three years later, we are here asking for just that. In 2021, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the staff to begin focusing on the lower pay grades and increasing the bottom closer to a fifteen-dollar-per-hour minimum. If you will recall, some employees were still being hired in within the eleven-dollar-an-hour range. With this goal to bring the bottom up closer to fifteen per hour and keeping use of the current pay scale, the following are recommended changes to the current scale. This will be shown on page two of what's been handed out to you. And focusing on blue are the changes that we would ask for. In the hourly labor clerical office grades, we, is where we are seeing the most turnover and have the most issues with recruitment. First, we are asking to eliminate the bottom two grades, grades ten and grades eleven. Second, we would ask for an additional three grades to be added, grade sixteen, grade seventeen, and grade eighteen, for placement of some middle management and other positions that may not rise to the level of a professional grade when looking at compensability factors. This would also bring this scale a little bit closer to the professional scale. The third ask is for an increase to the new base of grades twelve through eighteen to the first quartile, as currently allowed by policy to hire and add, making the new lowest hourly rate for any county position to be fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Finally, with this scale, we ask that the top be increased by one-point-five percent to allow for some slight movement to those employees who are and have been redlined. The next scale is the hourly management administrative and professional grades. In this scale, we seem to be pretty competitive or close to. We do not have as many issues hiring within these grades, but these positions do not become open as frequently as the others, and we do struggle for qualified candidates within this. For this scale, we simply ask for a slight increase of just up ten percent from where it currently is to the bottom, and then the same increase to the top at one and a half percent for a little movement on both ends. The executive grades, from what I recall, were at that time created for one position but ultimately never used. We further ask for elimination of the unused executive grades. When looking at the disciplines with higher turnover within the county and the market fluctuating differently across disciplines, the final adjustment to the current pay scale would be the third page of what you've been provided. And that is to transition from a one-size-fits-all model to incorporating individual pay scales for law enforcement, health, to include EMS and construction or public works. The administrative staff within these three disciplines would, however, remain within the current pay scale for the remaining county staff. The process that we went through was first, I created a, with the help of Mr. Reese, created a spread to give credit and slight adjustment to address some more compression. The spread was calculated using current grade ranges with the new recommended base for the respective grade, and the longest years of service at the county at that time, which was forty years. These calculations would allow for somewhere between nineteen cents to sixty-four cents per year of service within the current position. After that, we updated the current scale with the elimination of grades, addition of grades, and increasing the bottoms and tops as presented, which was found to be a more competitive scale. Finally, we had meetings with each department head that are required to adhere to the county pay policy and pay scale, to review their changes within their respective departments, and work together with each of them on concluding where we ended up, their budget impact with the proposed changes, and the methodology used to come to these conclusions. Ultimately, each meeting resulted in positive feedback about the process, equity across all departments for like positions, and the ability to address the biggest complaints related to them by their staff, compensation, and compression. The proposed pay changes will result in adjustments to all county staff that are required to adhere to the county pay plan, and changes are as follows: Keeping in mind these numbers are fluctuating constantly with internal movement of staff, new hires, and terminations. Approximately two-hundred-and-three employees will receive a market adjustment, averaging at about eight-point-eight-one percent across the board. Not all employees will receive that, some will be under that, some will be over that. Then approximately sixty-seven employees would receive a COLA adjustment of two-point-five percent. The staff at this time that would receive the COLA are placed appropriately or above within their scale. These adjustments will result fiscally in about seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand annually for the market adjustments, a hundred-and-two-thousand in 2023 for COLA adjustments. Fiscal impacts would be adjusted down slightly with those positions that are grant-funded or grant-reimbursed. The benefit impact at a twenty percent would be about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars annually. Again, there would be a slight adjustment down due to the grant benefits that are reimbursed. Again, in no means what is being proposed will fix all the issues faced at Fannie County, nor would these changes would allow Fannie County to lead the market in wages, and leading the market would not be something that I would advise. Fannie County does offer a very rich benefit package. However, the scale adjustment, pay adjustments for all county staff, and bringing the new hiring basis to a more competitive wage will begin what is next to come for Fannie County through what was mentioned prior, or something similar to, by Commissioner Kreitzer. through what was mentioned prior or something similar to by Commissioner Kreitzer and Commissioner Dave Jones. Mr. Reese can now add to anything that I have spoken on, and he can also provide the funding for what we are proposing.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert, and then we'll open it to questions.
Thank you, Kelly. I think we have a very good opportunity here to address just what the commission spoke about early on this year about focusing their three top focuses on the county annual budget. And as you may recall, your number-one priority was the employees. With that, through months of working with the, with the various departments that adheres to this pay scale, I think we have a very, very workable solution here and something that we spoke about early on this year in trying to make some adjustments to attract qualified talent to, to the county. With that, this is the impact of this pay scale adjustment is already incorporated into your annual budget. And so as you read through the budget this year, you will see that those numbers are already in there for your consideration. As I spoke about earlier, actually in late November, early December, to jumpstart this process, we are eligible and should utilize the ARPA funds for 2023 so that it lessens the tax impact to the community to jumpstart this process. In addition, we would anticipate that if approved by the Board of County Commissioners, that this would take effect in the fourth quarter of this year, with many, if not all of the departments, being able to absorb that impact within their current budget for this year. Are there any questions at this point?
The questions can be either to Kelly or to Robert at this time, and Larry?
Question, you said you mentioned ARPA funds.
Yes.
What was the dollar figure on that?
We have scheduled approximately one-point-five million dollars being transferred into the general fund to be dispersed among the other funds following the determination of the board here.
Anything else right now, Larry?
Not, not right now.
Bob?
Yes, Kelly, just listening quickly to your numbers, you're seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand for two-hundred-and-three employees. You know, that sounds like a lot of money, and then you break it down into employees per month and employees per hour, it's only about a two-dollar-an-hour increase, which, you know, it's not very much when you consider they didn't get much last year and we're trying to make it competitive. So I'm very, very pleased with that number. Relative to the hourly wages, annual wages, whatever you want to call, how much is your benefit package worth? In other words, you provide twenty-four days of vacation, you provide twenty-four days of health-related sickness, whatever. You have seven, nine, how many paid holidays?
Ten.
Ten, okay. So all of a sudden, we're at fifty-four days, a fourth of the year is compensated non-working. So, you know, what we're paying for is pretty beneficial. The capers, does the employee pay the capers or does the county pay the capers?
Oh, so the employees contribute six percent. In 2022, the county is contributing eight-point-nine percent. Also, we pay in one percent for basic life.
Okay, so if we were to take a bundle and say our benefits are thirty percent, thirty-five percent?
About twenty percent, I believe, is where we're at.
I think it got to be higher than that.
Actually, it, it would be closer to that, thirty-five to forty percent, somewhere in there, once you start factoring in leave time and health insurance. Your, your statutory requirements such as your retirement and taxes equates to approximately twenty percent. So then you add on your days off, vacation, and healthcare to that. Healthcare spread on an average per employee equates to about sixteen thousand dollars a year per average.
Very good. Well, I, you know, here again, I, I see this in terms of what it takes to compete in the market. What you're proposing is much, much closer. Now, I guess the other side, we had three-hundred-and-five employees, I believe you said previously, and we're about sixty openings at this point. Do the departments believe that we can live, because I know when we started in December, we had sixty openings, and if we have sixty openings, are we finally going to decide that we can live with sixty fewer people so that we'll have a little less of an impact? Or are we still looking to fill every spot just so we can say we're full?
I think if you recall during your budget presentation last meeting by some of the major departments, you heard from two of them, one of them going through a restructuring process. So the positions that are currently available may not be the actual positions that they fill. They may have morphed into a different, a different type of a position in order to accomplish the goals and objectives of the department. From the other department that has approximately ten to twelve of the vacancies, they too feel that, that they still need that, mostly because of the impact that the constant overtime on the current employees is having and actually contributing then to the attrition in that department as well.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. I appreciate that input. I believe that's all for now.
Okay. Dwayne?
Well, I wasn't scratching down numbers fast enough, but approximately a million dollars increase over what we've been.
And we're anticipating maybe a ten-to-fifteen percent variance in that. We have to still complete the job descriptions. The reason those got put on hold briefly was because I use compensable factor, compensable factor point system to grade those. The compensable factors, if we're going to eliminate two grades and add three grades, would need recalculated, and so we do need to finish up a few job descriptions. So I do anticipate that a few more may have some slight adjustments. So we calculate that at about ten-to-fifteen percent variance, and as soon as this pay scale is approved, I can finish up that project.
Anything else right now? Okay. Dave?
Thank you, sir. A couple things. Commissioner Bob made a statement a while ago, and I wonder if I'm misinformed or if there might have been a mistake in what he said. He said that to get, employees get twenty-four days of vacation and twenty-four days of sick leave a year, I'm assuming is what he was talking about, isn't it just half that?
It's, they get ninety-six hours of sick and vacation to start, and then vacation increases every five years.
The, the sick leave, well, the vacation depends on how many years of service you have, because the more you, more years you have, but it starts off with the entry-level employee, a day-per-month.
Correct.
Reach. So that's half of, of the twenty-four days.
But he's saying combined, I think.
Okay. Then I have a question for, for our administrator. If the budgets of the current year can absorb this plan, and next year we use ARPA funds, because one of the goals that the commission had not only was take care of employees, but also was to try to maintain a pretty level assessed, an assessment. What happens the year after when we don't have ARPA funds? Then all of a sudden, do, under the present rules, Robert, are we in jeopardy of running into, to some sort of a, of a shortage where we have to go to the voters, get approval, and so on? Can you kind of explain where that goes?
Sure, absolutely. Very good question. The reason why in the last quarter of this year, many of the departments will be, be able to absorb this impact is we give them, if this is approved, we will give them enough lead time to make whatever adjustments they have. And then keep in mind also that we talked about the vacancies, so that money that is there within their budget can be utilized then for the increases of those employees. Fourth quarter of this year, you have six payrolls left. That's all we're talking about to cover the remainder of twenty-two. The utilization of ARPA funds is to help jumpstart this thing so we can get it going earlier as opposed to later and reduce the impact, as I mentioned before, to the taxpayers. That then means that through this commitment by the Board of County Commissioners that this will be your new scale, that you will need to commit in essence then to whatever that needs to be to accomplish the pay for the, for the employees in twenty-four. So if that means that it might see a slight increase in the mill levy, you'll go through the same process that you'll be, that you went through last year, and potentially what you're looking at this year. In essence, that Senate Bill Twenty-Three, there's a process in es- in essence where you've exceeded that revenue-neutral, revenue-neutral spot so that then you would send out notifications, public hearing, and all this other stuff, and, and Dory will go through that a little bit later on this morning.
Okay, what I'm seeing is, is that second year down the road.
Twenty-four.
With this, this little over a million-dollar impact, that's two mills.
Correct.
So we, we need to, when we, when we consider voting here, we need to have a look and, so that's, that's my point.
Yes, it is a commitment. That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you know, part of the issue was, you know, when we started receiving the ARPA funds, we were always concerned about how are we going to get this back to the taxpayer? This looks like a more uniform, fairer way of doing it for the folks that pay the property taxes. You know, it's a, be a basically a mill, you know, at one-point-five on ARPA, that's three mills. So, you know, basically, it would hopefully hold that down for a year and give us a chance to see how to get things up and running and see if this is going to work. I think most taxpayer payers would appreciate that.
Bob?
You know, I think also, you know, you talked about the eight-point-something percent increase or adjustment from where we were to where you're proposing we go. When you relate that to last year and the year before, if you average those three years, it's a very low increase on a percentage basis. So I think a lot is in the way it's delivered in terms of investing in our people, so I think it's a very fair number.
Mr. Chairman, I happened to see a Facebook ad, and of course, we can believe in Facebook, but in, in Shawnee County, they had no pay raises last year, but their commission just voted to approve a ten percent pay raise for every employee and for the commissioners, five percent. So, I mean, they, that puts your, your job at risk maybe, but they did it, so. A lot of counties are having the same concerns that we are, trying to take care of employees in tight times.
Dwayne, anything else?
Or you mentioned our grade assessments haven't happened yet. Do you anticipate a lot of change in the departments of moving up a couple of grades for everybody, or is you, you expect our grades to remain fairly?
No, most of them, I think, were pretty consistent where they're at. We just had some that were, for whatever reason, graded, you know, two to three grades lower for like positions across the county, and that's the reason that I wouldn't recommend a ten percent across the board, because some people are not placed appropriately, and we need to get that fixed for those employees first.
Okay. Dave?
One, one more question, then I'm about out of questions. Some months back, as we were discussing employee benefits, there was a short discussion about maybe hiring an outside firm to take a look at what I call our brand of the county. Is that still being considered, or does that go on the wayside?
No, I think that's something that we can still consider. It's just given the timeframe that we had to try and react and get this within the twenty-three budget. We tried to focus this aspect of it, and as Kelly mentioned before, we can go back then and, and look at hiring an outside agency if that's the direction the commission still wants to pursue.
All right, thank you.
So you anticipate if, if this passes, it'll take immediate, immediate effect, right?
October.
And so what, staff is, excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, but staff is asking for board approval of this market adjustment plan. Is, am I correct on that?
Correct. You're being requested to adopt an updated wage scale for the county at that point in time. The policy still remains the same. The compensatory factors is still the same that was adopted by the board back in eighteen, nineteen timeframe. So all that still is, is intact. We are just providing a shifting of that current wage scale and the proper placement of the, the employees within that pace, within the new pay scale.
So, oh, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, if, if the board is so inclined, the motion would, to, to approve, the motion would be something to the effect that we approve this updated wage scale as, as presented, the updated wage scale as presented.
Correct, and we'll, and Kelly then will provide you with a signature page so you can sign off on that scale as well. Right?
I'm going to.
One last question, and I'm assuming that you have used this new wage rate scale in the proposed budget numbers that we're looking at for twenty-three?
That is correct.
Thank you.
That motion needs to include also that this would be if, except it be implemented in the third quarter of the current fiscal year.
Fourth quarter.
Fourth quarter, I'm sorry, fourth quarter?
Fourth quarter, yes.
Implementation begins fourth quarter.
Yeah, and, and this would, and this would take effect then the first paycheck pay period in October and run through the end of twenty-three.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move that we accept this revised wage scale, and secondly, that on or before the end of 2022, we engage a third-party professional organization to analyze our policies and procedures in terms of our brand recognition.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor, and it includes two parts, adopting the wage scale as presented effective fourth quarter, and to engage services of an outside firm with regard to the image, I think, is that the word you used?
Good.
Of, of the county. So it's a two-part motion, all in one motion? Discussion.
Bob, you, you're making me vote against my history. I've never voted for a study yet, but I even seconded that thing.
I knew that was coming. I wondered where that.
Well, you can vote to amend. It's on the floor.
Or if, if the motion is defeated, then we can come back with another motion. If the motion is approved, you know what it says, I believe. Any other comments?
The cost of the brand study will be a determining factor.
Well, that, I think at that time, it would be brought forward because there is no organizational contract that can be made without board approval.
You know what, I am going to offer an amendment to the motion that I seconded, that we split this into two different votes. The approval of the pay scale as a separate motion. That is my amendment to the motion.
There is an amendment to the motion, and, and that is to split these into two motions. Well, let's see, that's. Well, let's see, that's not quite right. Well, yeah, but I mean, that's not, that's not, I was going to say that doesn't, that's not really an amendment to the motion though. That's basically rescinding the motion.
He's offering an amendment. It's up to the person that provided the first motion to accept it or not.
I, I guess, well, I, I guess I'm having difficulty seeing it as an amendment, but go ahead. I'll, I'll go.
If you'll take that as an amendment, I'll offer a second to it, Mr. Chairman.
But, well, we have to have an agreement of the person who made the motion.
Correct.
To amend the motion.
Correct.
I don't think so. I think any motion may be amended and, you know, during the discussion time. So I think he has the right to make that amendment.
Like parliamentary procedure says, all it needs is a second.
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Roberts does that.
And there is a second to that motion to amend, and that is to split the original motion into two. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
One nay vote, the motion passes. So now the amendment is to split the original motion into two. So that means one would be with regard to the pay scale beginning fourth quarter. So is there a motion?
We have a motion.
Well, excuse me, we're voting on that, yeah, I didn't say that right. I'm, I'm sorry. We're voting on that portion of the motion, is what I meant to say. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor of the pay scale change beginning fourth quarter of 2022, please say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. The second portion of that motion was to engage an outside firm to study the image of Finney County and, yeah.
I'd like to make an announcement that because I have a relative involved in the outside work that we're discussing, I'm going to abstain from voting. Not that I don't support it, it's just that I, I have a conflict.
Okay, that's, appreciate knowing that. Any other comments or questions with regard to the outside firm? Dwayne?
My, my thought is that we need to have a discussion on who the outside firm would be as well as the cost of that firm before I could.
I have been in contact with the gentleman that Bob Kreitzer gave and also Dave Jones's relative. So I can get some more information for you on that. And look for others as well.
Okay, other comments or questions? So for the portion of the motion about engaging an outside firm, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. The motion fails on a split vote because we had one, one recusal. And we can come back and visit that again.
I'm in favor of that, but I want the numbers.
Right. But. Either way, we'd always have the numbers. This way it just kind of makes it official that we proceed. The reason I voted no was the way the motion was stated, that we engage a firm and might be something along the lines of Dwayne. I'm not, I'm not opposed to exploring the possibility of an outside firm, but I voted against it just the way the motion was stated.
Mr. Chairman, that's the most fun we've had on motions in 12 years I've been here.
Oh, no, we've, we've had it. Dwayne's going to be the Assistant Secretary for this meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Kelly.
So segueing into the budget, what we've done is approved the wage adjustment starting fourth quarter, but also is included in our budget considerations for 2023. And Robert, why don't you lead us off with the 2023 budgeting?
What I'll ask is perhaps to have Dory take the lead on this. A few of the Commissioners asked about Senate Bill 13, just as a, provide a review on that, the timing, the process, before we get into the quick review of the 23 proposed budget.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Within your budget books that were on your desk this morning, in the beginning of that, I did give you a printout of the slides that we'll be looking at. So this is just a brief overview of KSA 792988, which was also known as Senate Bill 13 when it was introduced back in 2021. And so that's what we're going to talk about today. If you go to the next slide, so what's in, what's in Senate Bill 13? Well, Senate Bill 13 repealed the tax lid. It established notice and hearing requirements if you want to go over the revenue neutral rate. So it also requires us to communicate or to make notice to our taxpayers in writing, which means that every taxpayer is going to get a notice if their rate is going, if the taxing entity is going to levy above that revenue neutral rate that I set. The last thing it does is, like I said, it sets the levying limits. So taxing entities are limited to levying the same amount that they did in the prior year. And that's all about revenue. So basically this bill says we want you to take in the same amount of revenue that you took in the prior year. As you'll see, when we have increases in, in insurance and escalating clauses in contracts, it makes that difficult to keep, and you know, you can't pay your employees more if you can't bring in more revenue. So, but what this does is really it just forces you to communicate it very clearly to taxpayers. So on the next slide, we'll go over the timeline. So in June, we received the valuations from the appraiser's office. And then with those valuations, on June 15th, I certified those valuations to each of the taxing entities and calculated the revenue neutral rate for each of the entities. So just like Finney County received their revenue neutral rate, the City of Garden City did, the schools did, the drainage districts, sewer districts, all of them received a revenue neutral rate, and they all have to abide by this law.
And that includes the extension district?
Yes, yes, every taxing entity, every taxing district in Finney County. By July 20th, and that's why we're getting down to the wire here, by July 20th, I have to know of your intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and the proposed rate and the hearing date. Because on July 20th, I am going to prepare those notices to all the taxpayers based on the information that all of the taxing districts have provided to me. I'm going to create those notices and those are going to get mailed out. And they have to be mailed out because hearings will start on August 20th. So I have from July 20th to August 20th, actually August 10th, because everybody needs to receive their notices 10 days ahead of time. And if the earliest hearing is on August 20th, then they need to receive their notice by August 10th. So we've got a pretty tight timeframe. That's why this July 20th date is so important. The next thing that will happen is that you will hold your budget hearings and that will include an RNR hearing, a revenue neutral rate hearing should you choose to exceed. And at that hearing, you would also adopt a resolution which allows you to exceed that rate. Those are the two basic requirements is to hold a hearing and to adopt a resolution. Same process you did last year.
But on that hearing, just to clarify, that, all of those entities could be at the same time. Could they not, or, or some of them could on the same day, same evening, whatever? Or do they each have to have their own hearing date?
They usually all have their own hearing date.
Yeah, but do they have to is what I'm saying. Because I was thinking there was something in the law that allowed that to be consolidated.
Well, I, they may have been talking about your revenue neutral rate hearing and your budget adoption hearing.
Right, revenue neutral.
So those two can be combined into one session, but I don't think across entities.
Okay, okay, all right. That's what I'm confusing. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Dory, quick question. Now, the state at one time was going to pay notification expenses?
Yes.
Are they going to do this again this coming year or, or this year, or how long was this going to last?
I, I believe they'll pay for the 23 and 24 hearing notices. So when I mail out this year, we'll actually pay all that upfront and then based, we'll allocate the cost of that based on who went over RNR, who didn't, and how many taxpayers they have. So there'll be an allocation eventually, but.
So you'll kind of have an estimate after the first year of what it's going to cost us if we do this in the future?
Yeah. Yeah, right now it's looking like about, could be up to $30,000 for that mailing. It's, it's pretty spendy. That'll get, the state will pay it for the first two years. Following that, the entities would be required to pay it back, any entity that went over the RNR. So we will be reimbursed, not for our portion, of course. We'll have to cover our portion. Yeah, we'll have a better idea this year, later this year, how that's all going to pan out.
On the RNR, when you quote unquote calculate that, it's based on all of the monies that you've taken in?
Yeah, it's the amount of tax levied in the prior year divided by the current year's estimated valuation.
Okay, and, and it has, so there's no cost of living or anything else allowed?
Absolutely not.
And then how does ARPA money go into that?
It doesn't.
All right, so any monies that come in on that are not calculated against us, if you will?
They're not considered at all. The, the taxes we're looking at is the ad valorem taxes.
Just, just the ad valorem. So with the report that we had from our assessor and treasurer of a 10% increase on residential, we will probably be in excess of RNR?
Usually when the, the valuation is up, your levy can go down because you don't need to, to levy as much tax to raise the same amount of revenue. But it, it all depends on your budget and your expenses and what those escalating clauses are and so.
Okay.
Go ahead, continue on.
Okay, so if we go to the next, the next one, I wanted to specifically just touch base on the hearing. There are a couple of new requirements this year. Like we talked about, that hearing must be conducted between August 20th and September 20th. That's a date that you'll be setting, you know, in the next meeting or two. We have to publish that, that hearing notice on the county website as well as in the newspaper and send taxpayers a notification. The taxpayers can attend that hearing, of course. It's a public meeting and a public hearing. They are allowed to give comments, but the governing body is not compelled to act. So it's like your standard budget adoption hearing. This year, when you vote on your resolution, there will be a roll call vote that must be recorded. We typically do that anyway, but that is a new requirement this year. And then, like I said before, we can do the budget adoption hearing can be conducted directly following your revenue neutral rate hearing. And then on the next page, I just went over a little bit of the compliance. So anybody who doesn't comply with all the provisions of the statute, the penalty for that is to basically do a refund for all taxpayers. So another change the legislature made last year was that the county clerk now has to police every one of those agencies and make sure that they've met all the requirements. And if they have not, then cap that, that levy at the RNR rate. So one, the last thing I wanted to mention was that there is some difference between what we've calculated, the RNR, we do that based on the estimated valuation. And in November, of course, we get our final valuation, which will certainly be different. So entities that conduct a hearing can adopt a budget that exceeds the proposed rate. So you're going to be making a proposed rate when you decide that you intend to go over the RNR. But the final November valuation calculated could be a higher mill, mill levy rate to meet that revenue requirement. So it just depends on what your valuation does. So even if you're not intending to exceed the RNR, entities are probably wise to do so just because you never know what that valuation is going to do by November. So if you don't do any of those things, then you're automatically capped at that RNR. And if the valuation were to tank before November, then you could be in a pickle, so. Any other questions on the RNR?
Additional questions to Dory with, with regard to the revenue neutral rate explanation? Because if not, then we'll have Robert head into the budget presentation with this is our backdrop. This is the current state law, the revenue neutral rate.
All right, I think what you'll see on your screen is the notice of budget hearing page. In essence, that's a summary of what we're here to review, discuss, and get any further direction from the board on. The first grouping, as you can tell, those are your 14 taxing funds that you see before you. Over on the far right, you'll see proposed budget year 2023 with the budget authority that it provides per fund, the amount of ad valorem tax to fund that per fund, and then what the estimated proposed tax rate is. Now, Dory spoke about the, your RNR rate. And this year's RNR rate you'll find at the bottom of that page on the right-hand side. If you scroll up just a little bit, please, you'll see the number of 44.235. That is your revenue neutral rate. In essence, that's the amount of mills it takes to generate the same amount of revenue that you raised last year. And that is what the state legislators have provided you to work with, unless you go through the process that Dory just spoke about. This year's mill levy rate is in the center on that same line at 49.944, which was approximately 1.3 mills greater than the year before. So as you can see, as we walk through this, the bottom line just above that revenue neutral rate, proposed mill levy is 51.561 based upon what has been presented to you in the budget. Now, I did add a little something to that spreadsheet here off to the right-hand side. It gives you an idea of, of where everybody's at within their funds and how it ebbs and flows, if you will, from the prior year. And it's just a, just a, another sidebar for you to look at based upon the proposed budget. There's a few things within this budget that I wanted to make sure you are aware of. And one of them is the, as you just provided, was the approval of the wage increases for the county employees, which, very appreciative of that. Additionally, we talked about the insurances that have gone up, both your property and casualty and so forth. That was approximately a 9% increase. And then, of course, your health insurance this year. We just sat through a presentation last Thursday on that. And we're looking at an increase of approximately 31% on health insurance for the county. Within that, within the budget, that's already built into this budget here where I'm proposing that the county absorb that entire rate. I don't want to pass that on. I'm not proposing that we pass that on to the employees. Last year, we had a small adjustment in the employee rate to align it similar to market. I'm not proposing that this year. Additionally, in your three priorities, you talked about trying to maintain infrastructure and equipment, our commitment to that. This year, in the current proposed budget, we have committed to funding the capital improvement program for your facilities as well as equipment replacement at 100%. Last year, we proposed that in the 22 budget. but had to back off of it in order to get the commission to a mill levy rate that they were comfortable with. So, this year, we're looking at fully funding that under the proposed rate here as well. And then lastly, is the attempt to try and maintain, as Commissioner Dave Jones pointed out, a relatively level mill levy rate. And once again, what's being proposed here is approximately one point six mills above last year, prior to any of your decisions on how you want to move forward. Out of the fourteen taxing funds, you received presentations from five of them, five major groups that you have. And at that point in time, had no further questions for those departments or those department heads and their budget. So, the second group in below is a group of funds that are, in essence, a special revenue fund. There are funds that revenues are generated from other sources other than ad valorem taxes directly. And so, in essence, those are consistent with what we have done in the, in the past. And if I can back up for just one moment, with the outside agencies, as directed a couple of meetings ago, I went ahead and placed them back at their twenty-twenty-two rate for this discussion. At this point in time, I know there's an awful lot, and you've had this opportunity to at least see the documents over the weekend, whether you had the opportunity to focus on them or not. That's something different, but anyway, that is a broad overview of, of where we are at. There are a couple of things here that are not within this document yet and that, that will be finished up this week. And that's the three sewer funds that we have. I've not gotten around to doing those budgets, but traditionally, those are not scrutinized as much by the Board of County Commissioners. There's only one of them that taxes ad valorem tax, and I don't anticipate that going up because, remember, that sewer district, we did a refunding of their bond, which maintained a bond payment at or below what was currently being paid. So, that's that. The other thing here is a schedule of transfers. Now, we do have the, the traditional transfers where we transfer out of Public Works into their special highway fund and things like that. But the transfers, other than the ARPA funds into the general fund, there's no other transfers. I scheduled this so we're not transferring out of the landfill to any of the funds. And we're not scheduling a transfer out of the oil and gas fund into any of the funds this year. And yet, as you review the right-hand side, you see that, based upon the mill levy, there's not a need for that. So, are there any questions at this point in time? And Chairman, that is up to you to lead that discussion.
And I have a question, but I'll save mine until the end. It may be asked by somebody else, so.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm going to save my question till the end.
Well, I'm looking, I, I guess, I don't quite understand your document, Robert, and that's not criticism. It's just my lack of understanding when.
How can I help?
When the ad valorem tax is shown for year after year until we get to the upcoming budget year, and it's not there. Explain to me how the, and then we get down below and the numbers are way different. Total resources on page one are way off from thirteen and a half million down to a little bit over nine million. I'm not understanding that.
Okay, which document are you? Ah, okay.
General fund, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just started off on page one with, with not understanding, so.
You may be here all day if we're just starting on page one here. Oh, to- total resources available?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Now, that is all the resources except for your ad valorem tax. So, now, go to, I hate to sound like Paul Harvey, but if you go to page four, you'll see the tax requirement on page four.
Page four?
Yep, at the bottom, three point three million dollars.
Okay.
So, it's the sum of those two numbers, which are used to drive this budget. But, but keep in mind, when the auditors made their presentation this, this last year here, a couple of meetings ago, one of the things they talked about was a trend over the last couple of years of the county increasing their fund balance, beginning cash.
Up somewhere around thirty percent.
Yeah, so, that, in essence, is what you're seeing within this budget, is the results of that. We have a higher cash balance going into this budget, so we don't need to necessarily show, reflect the added increase in, by way of example, the general fund because of the fact that you, you're starting off, from the budgeted standpoint, with a higher tax balance. If you recall from last year, your beginning, anticipated beginning tax balance or cash balance for this year, twenty-two, was right around three million. Now, it ended up being more because you don't spend all of your dollars and you conserve the E S M H of revenues. But in this one here, we show a four million dollar beginning cash balance at the beginning of twenty-three. So, that helps compensate for that added spending, added increase in expenditures, and really, that's driven by the fact that we are fully funding your reserve funds for your number-two commitment that you provided to me, which was your capital improvement plan and your equipment reserve plan.
Alright, thank you. I'll have a bunch more questions, but not now.
I'm on the very first page, the general overdraft. I'm looking at the current year estimate twenty-twenty-two for capital improvements. Did we have a relatively high capital improvement expense over what we budgeted last year? Because I'm not, I, I'm reading one point nine eight nine million for capital improvement program, but we didn't budget that. Evidently, we had a lot of expense.
Yeah, if, if you recall, that particular one is driven by a sales tax reven- revenue. That's the quarter percent revenue. I'm going to look at Dory at that. P R M P, so, so that was based upon the expenses on that, that you're, that you're seeing is reflected on whatever major projects that we began paying. And you'll see in twenty-three, a lot of that has to do with Farland Road project. And before that, it was our contribution to Jenny Barker, I believe. Road. So, so that's why you'll see that.
Traditionally, that B R M P fund has been used to fund half of road projects that Roden Bridge does, so.
Anything else right now?
Not yet.
Larry?
My question would be the same thing with the landfill. What, there is a big, big difference between twenty-one and twenty-two, approximately five hundred thousand. Is that, then it drops back down to five seventy-five for twenty, proposed? Is that just dumpage fees?
It is, yes, it is expenses related to the landfill to include any transfers out of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Bob?
I'm fine right now. Thank you.
Other questions? Dave, anything else? I'm on your, your summary page, the, the.
Same one that's on the board?
Yes.
Okay.
They want to scroll, well, they're pretty much, yeah, there you go, just scroll up. So, as I look over to the far right
Okay.
and look at the rate change, the tax rate change, I'm seeing all of them, you know, plus or minus, being less than one percent, if I'm looking at all of them correctly, except for law enforcement. And it's showing about a four percent increase.
Four mil increase.
Alright, yeah, I misspoke. Yes, four mil. I meant, yeah, I, I knew that, but I just misspoke. Four mil increase. And in that law enforcement, and I'm doing this partly for my education, but partly for education of those out in the, out watching and those in the audience here with us today. But law enforcement is two different, or includes two budgets, one for the sheriff's office and one for the county attorney's office. Is, is that the only two that are included in law enforcement?
That is correct.
Okay, so are each of them contributing, and I can scroll through some of those other pages, but are each of them contributing about an equal amount to the four mil increase, or?
No, it's not an equal amount. I'm trying to recall outside of the.
I haven't scrolled through.
Yeah, outside of the recent agreement that was approved for nurse, for that, for the jail facility, which was somewhere around that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar mark. And then we did work through with the sheriff's office, their equipment replacement plan, specifically vehicles, and found that it was underfunded. So, you'll see a little bit of an increase in that line, line item because we properly funded their vehicle replacement plan. So, I, total number wise, we're probably up in the S O's office, somewhere around that four hundred thousand mark.
About one mil or?
Yeah, about eight tenths of a mil there. And then, presentation by the county attorney on, on hers, I think, was somewhere around close to nine mil, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand for that. So, that, that, if you will, kind of makes up that, what comprises of that increase of approximately four mills.
I just think it's, it's important for us to understand what's driving the, the projected increases, so, yeah, thank you. Other questions, board members?
Part of this shuffled with law enforcement, doesn't that involve the benefits package that was exempt and was moved back and forth?
Well, actually not in this year. We did that last year, if, if you recall, because of this, this new Senate bill that the county and all the other municipalities are having to work with. So, that was done last year in the twenty-two budget. We're living that now.
And, and, and I might, I might point out too, I don't know if all the department heads are here. I see health and public works and sheriff and county attorney. So, if, if you have questions that are above and beyond what you want to ask Robert, we certainly have the resources here in the room today to ask those questions directly to them as well. But other questions that you might have today, and, and as they're thinking about those questions, your intent today is what? And where are we moving, or what are we moving to next Monday, you know, when we get back together? Kind of help us understand the process and, and the phase or stages that we're in right now as they're thinking about other questions?
Today, in essence, is the, is the formal presentation of the annual budget, proposed budget. From, from there, what I'm hoping to glean from the Board of County Commissioners at this point in time is any additional thoughts or adjustments or what ifs, so that we can go back and, if need be, try and massage this. Any direction that you can give me on, on where you feel comfortable at, with, with the budget? We've done a lot of things this, this year. Most of it, it stems from, goes back to about two, almost two and a half years ago, in essence, changing the way we started to budget, starting to build some cash balances, started back then, a formalized inventory process, a formalized capital improvement program and so forth. And this is, this is kind of the culmination of what, what's happening now this year. In essence, you're seeing the results of what we anticipated with the fiscal committee would take three to five years to fully develop. In essence, then, planning what actually, what it costs to operate and to maintain our facilities in the same breath.
Okay, and so, today, we're, we're seeing the budget as you've constructed it. Next meeting, we need to come to a final conclusion, or almost a final conclusion, because we would have the eighteenth yet, where we could make a change if we needed to. I still get it to Dory on time. Am I correct in that sense?
You, you do, but that only gives me about two, two days to do that. So, what I'm hoping is that, that after seeing it over the weekend, perhaps, if you had an opportunity to, to look at it, that you're feeling comfortable in some of the areas, some of the funds that we, that we have here. And maybe in other areas, you're, you still have some questions, and that's what I'm hoping to pull from you is. And what, what other questions? What's making you?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I would also offer that when you're setting this proposed rate by July twentieth, you can continue to come down from that.
Correct.
That can be adjusted. You could just never go over.
Right.
So, there's really no harm in setting that proposed rate.
Good point.
Yep.
So, yeah, keep that in mind, is you're not locking yourself into anything at this point, other than we won't go over this amount. You can always come back down.
Yep, based upon the hearing.
Oh, that, and I knew that, but thank you for that reminder. That, I think that's an important reminder. Thank you for that, yeah. Larry, anything else right now, or? Okay, Bob?
So, basically, and, once again, trying to understand R and R.
Sure.
The, that would be the forty-four mills that's on the bottom line.
Yes, in essence, that's what the, what's been calculated by the clerk and guidance with, in, under the guidelines of that Senate Bill thirteen, correct.
And right now, the budget, the way we have it outlined to us, is the fifty-one. So, somewhere in between those two. If, if we do anything over the forty-four mills, it would require this hearing.
That's correct.
Correct.
And just to further answer that, Bob, we didn't have to publish notice, or we didn't have to send notices last year, but we were at forty-nine nine four four last year. And so, had we had to send notices, we would have been required to do that last year as well. So, it's not anything different, other than now they're implementing the sending of notices and so forth when you're over forty-four.
It's really about, yeah, it's really about transparency.
Yeah.
To your taxpayers, so.
Your revenue neutral rate last year was somewhere around that forty-seven point eight mills. So, we exceeded that by about almost two mills, if I remember right.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. It was a different number for the revenue neutral rate, but we were still over it, is what I was trying to say, yeah.
And once, and, once again, that's driven by the increase in the assessed valuation.
Dwayne?
Well, I think this is probably a responsible budget con- consideration, what we discussed earlier with employees, capital improvements. I can feel the taxpayer outrage when our valuations went up ten to twenty percent and the mill levy's not gone down. I can feel the whiplash, but it is, like I said, I think this is a responsible budget presentation, so, just an observation.
Dave?
Well, I have, I need a little clarity, and maybe Dory is the one I just need to pose a question to. As, i- if we would go above the revenue neutral, have the hearing, everything that she laid out, then next year, our revenue neutral base starts off higher, correct?
That's correct, because it would be calculated on the, the amount of tax you levied in the previous year and then the current year's estimated valuation. So, that's a. and then the current year's estimated valuation. So that's constantly changing based on what you do from one year to the next.
At, at some point, a whole lot of entities like our county are going to get caught up where you're going to have to go over that revenue neutral rate in order to keep up with cost of living. Because that's not, not part of the equation.
Exactly. Like I talked about earlier, that's all based on the same amount of revenue from year to year. You can't give your employees raises. You can't pay more for health insurance. You can't absorb, you know, those contract escalations. And it's just impossible to live that.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, anything you've come up with in meantime? Well, my, my comment is, first of all, I think Dwayne used the word responsible. I think it is a responsible budget and it's taking into account the priorities that we, uh, outlined, the three priorities that we outlined to you, uh, initially. And I guess the one thought that's going through my mind, and I just, I'm rounding numbers here for a little bit, but say last year's, uh, mill levy rate was 50 instead of, you know, that odd number. Uh, if we said we wanted to stay at last year's mill levy rate of 50, it means we'd have to, uh, decrease by about one and a half pers, or one and a half mils.
1.6 mils.
Uh, and in my opinion, the only place I see that we'd be able to do that is in the law enforcement area because everything else is pretty well level, you know? And, uh, so any particular thoughts or any, and, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you don't have any about it, that, that's fine. But I, just from my observation, from my perspective, when you have, uh, one, uh, line item that's up four mils where everything else is pretty much level, uh, I, well, let me back up a half step. My editorial comment is, in, in the, in previous times, there's been some boards that say, doing a cross-the-board cut of 10% or 5% or, you know, whatever. And I am absolutely not in favor of cross-the-board cuts. To me, you have to go back and say, okay, which one has a little bit more fluff, if you will, or a little bit more flexibility in it? Uh, and that's the only place that I see it in, unless I'm missing something, uh, is in the law enforcement area.
Yeah, that 1.6 mils equates to just under $900,000, about 875 to 880,000 dollars. So, um, if there seems to be a comfort level at a specific, um, mill levy rate, then I think you, one, need to make a determination on a per-fund basis of which ones you're comfortable with and which ones do you want to have a discussion with, uh, those department heads on theirs? And see how, um, where you might end up in that regards. And that's really the, um, most reasonable and rational way to approach that at that point in time.
That would be the respectful way to do that as well. Showing respect for those varying. So any guidance, uh, you would like to give Robert with regard to, and, and keeping in mind what Dory just said, we can always have a higher rate. We can always go lower. We can't go higher than that once we, uh, publish it on July 20th. But Dwayne uses, or used the word responsible. Any other thoughts with regard to the 51.561 mil?
I guess, you know, my comment would be, you know, you, you just look at what our costs are and what they've done. And even though we've, um, picked up valuation increase, it's not going to cover the costs. And, um, you know, when you have a 31% increase in healthcare costs, that's a staggering amount. And, um, as we all know that are running businesses, you know, every cost is increasing. It's just, yep, where you can tighten the belt enough.
Bob?
I think you can take that same analogy and put it on road and bridge. And the health department, I know, went up significantly. Uh, and obviously they had some tremendous, uh, cost expressions over the last couple of years with COVID, but we're actually significantly increasing their budget. And theoretically, we're down the curve a long way on, on COVID relationships. So I think all of those areas need to take another balance. But I think that word responsible, I, I like that. Um, but all of the costs that we incur from the food that we have to feed the prisoners to all of the things that come down the line in terms of the wages of just the impact that we talked about today, uh, costs significantly more. And you sit here and, and you, it's almost like we're apologizing for having growth and our market values are going up and so our assessed values are going up. So we're really kind of shoving ourselves into a box. I, I don't think Fannie County will ever have an opportunity to come in with the same mill levy and be revenue neutral because our growth on a year-to-year basis is going to be bigger than that. So I think we need to go eyes wide open. But if we're going to do something in relationship to that mill levy, I think we need to be able to stand behind it and say, this is what we did and why.
I would agree with that. Yeah. Dave?
I think hang on to this and see what we add in the next couple of meetings. And, and as Dwayne said, it, it appears to be pretty responsible.
Anything to add to that, Dwayne?
I better leave it alone.
He said it so well the first time and, yeah. So it seems as if the read that, that I'm taking away from this, and I trust you are as well, that, uh, yes, we might come back and lower it a little bit, but we're comfortable with this responsible budget. And, and I think for the most part, we understand how you got to this budget with regard to people and capital improvements and so forth and so on. So, uh, I don't think I'm misreading, uh, my fellow commissioners at this point.
Well, at this point in time then, yeah, at this point in time then, um, I will not touch this document as far as what I've presented to you. Uh, what I would ask though, that this week, since we do have a meeting next Monday, uh, is that if you have specific requests of departments coming in or whatever the question, uh, question may be, or questions about the document, some more details, uh, go ahead and get ahold of me so we can have the opportunity to research any and all of those questions so that we may be able to answer those in a timely fashion for you on Monday. Uh, my, my preference next Monday is to come away with where you would like to be at, um, so that we don't create an unnecessary crunch time in getting it to the county clerk, for notica, for notifications and so forth.
Another question just popped in my mind with the comments you were making. And I think you're going to address it in your administrator report, but we had a little task force charged with the indigent, uh, uh.
Defense?
Defense, uh, uh, if, if that contract would come in higher than what it is this year, that type of thing, and I'm just using that as an example, but we've got some of those little things hanging out there. Those are not projected into the, am I correct on that?
Any anticipated increase from indigent defense services is not included within this document.
And there could be some little things like that that, you know, that.
Possibly, possibly, but I think, I think all the other bogies out there are in, uh, this one here being the, the potential of being a, having an impact.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Anything else? We'll end the budget discussion for today. And you've heard the request from our administrator, please spend time with it this week. And if you have requests for him to bring in, uh, department heads or additional information, uh, he'll be ready to do that on Monday, uh, the 11th. So let's, uh, and to kind of let Robert catch his breath, I'm going to reverse the order. Uh, so Linda, let's go first. Anything that you need to report, uh, from a counselor's perspective?
Uh, just briefly, I know I had talked about doing a, a resolution for the tax sale at this meeting, but I'm going to hold off until the 20th just, um, for a number of reasons. Mostly just the quantity of work that's going to be required, um, once that gets going. But that is going to be coming to you on, um, that, at that time. Can, I mean, continuing to, to do some work with regard to the Western Corridor project and Northwest Industrial District, Sewer District. I know, uh, the Rural Water Department talked to Robert earlier and he asked me to take care of some things with regard to that, so, um, moving forward on those items.
Okay, all right. Now, Robert.
Thanks for the breather. Well, as, as you saw, uh, what's consumed most of our time here, uh, we do have some other projects that we have going on. Uh, I do know that Kurt has got a follow-up meeting with a structural engineer this week to look at the Fairgrounds facility. Is that not correct, Kurt? If I remember right?
I'm still waiting on him to get back to me.
Okay. Okay, so, so we've met, uh, I think he's met with the architect on that. Their recommendation is to get a structural engineer involved just to do an assessment on it, uh, prior to moving forward in, in, uh, in that regards. Uh, Kurt's also, uh, working with, um, Sloane Iron Hancock on the, um, sewer specs for those 10, excuse me, 11 pump stations, um, so that we can send out a, a request for proposal on the improvements needed there. And then we've got, um, we will begin the process of going out for qualifications on the, um, Health Department EMS facility as well. As you recall, we will start to receive revenues, uh, for that beginning, looking at September, so that we'll then begin developing that, um, source of revenue so that we can move forward in that regards. As you look at your, your budget, I am not utilizing any of the funds off of that sales tax to fund the county operations. It's, it is to, um, uh, I am keeping it focused on the, um, on that project specifically, um, as the commission wished. So we're able to, go ahead.
You, we talked about a need, need assessment study. Is that included? Is that what?
Yes, correct. Yep, that is correct. So those are things we'll start to move forward on with some, uh, major projects now that we hopefully are wrapping this aspect of it and we'll get back to doing other things then.
So back to my comment and question I was asking when you were at the podium with the indigent defense. Do we expect that to, uh, come back to us either Monday or the 18th? Or does it matter that much as far as?
I thi, I think it answers. Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, I believe they said they would have something back to us after the 11th. Is that correct? I'm looking at Dory. I should share that email with her.
Yeah, I was thinking she was going to do something preliminary.
Yes, so we could have something as early as late this week. Yep.
Any questions to Robert? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
On the analysis and study of the Fairgrounds Exhibition Building, had a chance to talk with the mayor at an open house this last week. And he said that they were engaging a consultant to look at an ice rink and other things for the Recreation Commission. And that, you know, there was an opportunity to maybe look at the whole convention center concept at the same time. Is there any plus or minus to doing that or not doing that?
Uh, you know, it, it could be inclutable within that broad, um, that broader scope, if you will. But probably more than anything, it is, um, the, the primary focus is being able to utilize that facility as it is outlined within your emergency response plan, uh, which in essence calls it a potential shelter. And so in, in, in essence, the improvements being made is to provide it with a more, more useful, uh, within those types of response, whether it has to do with a response like we did with COVID or if there is a need for a shelter. We had, um, in 20, late, late 20, I believe, uh, a need for a, um, shelter because of the cold weather and so forth. I think it was actually February of 21. And, um, and we weren't able to provide that resource. So even though it is outlined with, within the emergency management plan, we need to make sure that that facility's up to stuff. So it's things such as improvements to, uh, heating, uh, making determination finally if it is eligible to, uh, be air conditioning for, uh, year-round utilization, alternative energy source generator for that facility as well. Those are the things we're looking at just for the usability of it. It's not necessarily anticipated to be a utilized as a big draw center other than what is being utilized right now.
Okay, well, they're just saying like, if we're going to have experts in town studying these other philosophies, I know the convention center exhibition space, whatever it might be called, was something that came up in our, uh, work plan back in January. And it looked like this might be a really good, I'm going to say lesser cost alternative to bundle with the city. And, you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Economic Development would probably be the two sources that could benefit more from that kind of a resolution. And maybe after, again, here looking at the audit, the dollars that they have in their cash reserves uh, might be a way to fund something like that and get more bang for our buck. Uh, it just seems like we ought to take a look and see what it's like.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't disagree with that. I think it needs a broader scope than an ice skating rink, uh, scope. Um, and I know that in prior conversations over the past few months with, um, CVB representatives that, um, uh, they are taking a much broader look at an overarching, um, inventory, if you will, of, um, uh, of what we have available and, um, what is it that we're trying to attract.
Well, but if, if they've already done a lot of that work, they could identify the scope very clearly for a third party. And I don't know whether they've gotten to the point where they have looked at a consultant, uh, to make a decision like that. Because I, certainly if we're talking about ever maybe building something like that, we would have some kind of a reason and a complete study to do that. And, you know, if this group that's coming in are qualified, and I, I don't know whether they are or not, but it seems to me we ought to at least ask.
Yeah, yes, and I, I, I think that's appropriate as well. I do know that, uh, when, uh, Roxanne was here during her presentation of CVB, she did mention be, coming back from, uh, her convention and engaging with one of the consultants there uh, about just such a study. And in, um, uh, in, um, just recent past, uh, discussions with her is that, uh, I believe both, uh, her and, um, Mika are working on, uh, trying to flesh that out a little bit more to get a little bit more detail on, on a broader scope at this point in time. And trying to run then by that, uh, group that Commissioner Pishney had put together to initially, um, discuss that.
So we're about to the point where we could look at two different RFQs. One that the city's using and one that this other group's using and.
Could, could be.
And try to make a decision, um, because I think, I guess we would be involved in that decision.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it would, you know, both commissions would be involved, city and, and county. Uh, and Robert is absolutely correct. Uh, the, the work group that we brought together, which included, uh, all the different stakeholders, uh, charged, uh, the chamber and CVB with coming up with an RFQ or RFP. Uh, that's been put on hold for a variety of reasons, uh, some of them personal reasons of the, uh, people involved. And then some of them were like with, uh, the people involved, and then some of them were like with golf tournaments and things like that, that have taken an inordinate amount of time. So that's in process, and, but no, the decisions would not be made without commission, commission authority.
Mr. Chairman, isn't there also a community event center in the plans at the Starbond?
Yes and no, because it can't be called that, but that, I mean, that would be a part of this needs, that would be a part of this needs assessment, is what would be included out there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Larry, let's start with you, since you're closest to the...
About the only thing I can really report is that, I've had several conversations, people ask me about, you know, on the bird issue, and comment where we were headed and what was driving this. And, you know, my comments were that, you know, we've had complaints from hoteliers and business people. But anyway, going on, met, had a sit-down with the new president of Kansas State, which was quite interesting. And he talked about the amount of decrease of students in the Midwest, you know, K-State's not the only university that's dropping enrollment. But it was quite a candid conversation, and they've got some really good ideas of what they're going to do, because he came from the East Coast, and that's just the opposite problem they have. You know, they have lots of students. And so it's, it was, you know, that's the first time I could ever remember meeting with a university president out here. Most of the time, they don't count Western Kansas much, but this one does, and he's very interested. So it's a good meet.
Bob?
Mine was pretty much the same kind of a month. We had some board meetings that didn't happen. But I guess I would ask, number, I think on your meeting list last week, we had a meeting with Neighborhood Development on code enforcement. Did anything come out of that?
We just simply had asked Trent to sit down with us and just make sure we were on the same page, and it ended up being a little more discussion than just code enforcement. Danielle, Danielle from the city, we found out, one thing I found out, and I don't think Robert was aware either, but she is over the Neighborhood Development. We did not know that in this process. We did know that Myra is the point person with regard to these development projects. We knew that, and just talked a little bit about some of the concerns we had in the process of all the entities that were involved with regard to the development. But it was, it was just simply get acquainted better with Trent and the department, and we did not make any decisions. We just simply had a good conversation and got better acquainted with him and Danielle. I guess the one thing we did point out, you know, and I'm not trying to speak for the board, but the city had the meeting where they pretty much have said complaint-driven is the code enforcement philosophy in Fannie County, or in Garden City. And, and we didn't see at this, at this point of trying to go against that, as far as trying to become proactive out in the county and reactive in the city. So we just, you know, we just kind of reinforced that that's the conversation we've had as well, complaint-driven. More than you asked for, I guess, but it was more, it was more just to get better acquainted and, and help Trent understand what some of the expectations are from the county and how the Neighborhood Development can help the county.
The only thing I would add is that, once again, is that reinforcement of the process that has been in place for years and years, apparently, is the, these projects go through Neighborhood Development, and they keep a listing, and they're actually developing shared drive now, so we all know where projects are at, and the role in which individuals or entities play in moving that project forward. So that's, that's being a little bit more formalized. And then the second thing that we, that was a takeaway, was in essence, discussing the potential of developing a formal extended land use plan with, outside in the county, so that as we get these developments that come in, we're not building to two or three different standards. We're building to one standard. And so that is, in essence, what I'm much more familiar with and used to, is that when we have a, when we have a development within the, let's call it the extraterritorial area, which is that area up to three miles outside of the city limits, or their extended growth area, which could go a little bit further. And oftentimes, those are driven by numerous things, their ability to extend services in those areas, and/or doing a comprehensive stormwater management plan, so that we can plan those developments accordingly. And in essence, then, it's the county then developing like-kind standards, if you will, to, to allow us to see that seamless growth between city and county development. So that was one thing that we talked about, kind of a high, high-level view of that as well. Sorry. So I thought it was a very good conversation. I know that Kurt and I had spoke in other meetings about updating the 25-year-old, if you will, standards that the county has on their developments, and it's on the list of things to do, so.
Again, Bob, I appreciate that report. I, it's just nice to be involved and understand what some of those meetings are about. And I guess the last thing I would ask sometime over the next couple of months, that we do, again, revisit this whole concept about looking at the image of the county and not let it just continue to rise. Thanks.
Don't have a problem with that? No, I, and I'll give my report last, but you, I appreciate you asking a question. That meeting with Trent, that was one of my items that I was going to report on today, so. Dave?
Boy, you just jumped right over.
Yep.
Dwayne?
We're, we're coming into the middle.
I don't have much. We had a library board meeting, but it was a week later than generally is held, and I want to report a little extra discussion I had with the LSNS representative. They have a five-year contract with the board, with the library board for services, but every year they send out a, a document titled Schedule A, and it's an adjustment. And every year that adjustment is no less than two and a half percent and as high as five percent. And the board, the library board is somewhat held hostage, if you will, and is probably a strong term, but it's kind of here it is, and accept it. There's not much room for negotiation. So I challenged that, and I, I informed the library board and the LSNS representative that their funding for fiscal year '23 may be a little less than what they asked for. And they may need to make some adjustments to come up with some manner of raising extra funds or negotiate that contract. And so I had a promise from LSNS representative that they would, in fact, come out and sit down and negotiate the Schedule A when it comes, the next one that comes out. So we'll, we will see. They've provided good service, but good service comes at a cost. And so when they, their Schedule A exceeds what the county appropriates, then, then there's a concern, a problem. And then I had a kind of a funny event. On the 24th, I was invited to the Nazarene Women's Ministry Dinner, and it was to honor patriotism and community service. And I was one of three speakers, and it was an enjoyable evening. Got, got a good meal, good fellowship, and, and so that's about the size of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dwayne, I know what some of your report is, but go ahead.
Oh, maybe, maybe not. As you know, I missed last meeting, so kind of got two fair board deals. The last meeting, a lot of time was spent on timeframe, how all the flow of the events are going to happen. The fair does start the 20th of this month, actual exhibits start arriving, four-Hers and so forth. We do have another meeting Wednesday night for a final, last-minute, put-out-the-fires-type, what are we going to do now, type of meeting. I will point out that they are, at that point in time, and I believe they still are looking for fair superintendents, for anybody who wants to judge crops, rabbits, well, probably not rabbits, but any of the open class events, you know, they'll always accept volunteers. So I'll spin that out to the public there. Attended the Convention and Visitors last meeting, general consent, discussions on upcoming events and how they're going to fund them, as well as a little bit of the bird conversation with some of the hotelers who have a problem. Great Plains Annual Meeting just the other day, nothing new, nothing exciting. We do have another meeting Thursday for a loan approval that's going to come in front of the board. So that's pretty much it.
I have a question for Dwayne, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Larry would like for me to ask you, are we going to have mutton busting, judging this year at the fair?
No, we are not doing mutton busting. The local sheep provider has, is now out of business. So we, you'd have to go to goats or something like that.
There's your answer, Larry.
No mutton busting.
Yeah, Larry's offended. He thinks it's due to the judging qualifications in the past, yeah.
And the, the figure-eight car race guy, he kind of disappeared, so that's off the table, too, which is probably, Roden Bridge is probably very thrilled to know that that man's not going to be.
Their antique tractor pull, they're going to pull the sled?
Antique tractor pull starts at 6:00 Saturday and runs till?
Whenever.
Whenever, probably, probably midnight.
You know, years ago, they just backed two tractors up and bolted them together, and then saw which one could pull the other. That was more exciting.
They were expecting well over 100 tractors for that tractor pull.
Really? Oh, that's good.
And there'll be a 1938 D model John Deere there, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, you're right.
All right.
There'll be one there. But, no, the fair, the fair will be, especially the Saturday. There will be gobs and gobs and stuff to do, start to finish on Saturday.
My, my time's been filled with some different community events. One particularly I want to highlight is the groundbreaking we had at the Community College with the STEM program and the addition that Senator Moran was here for, and also announced that day that there was an additional million dollars that was being granted to the Community College for technology and so forth. So that's, the Community College is, is doing well. And then the other two, two things, well, and then the other one I was going to report on, but I've already said that, was the meeting we had with Neighborhood Development, just to get better acquainted. And I appreciate, I really appreciate Trent's temperament and his objectives as head of that department. I, I think he is doing well. The other two things, one is I do plan to attend the NACO National Conference, and are others in the county going out to that, or do you know, or? Curtis? Okay. So three or four of us from here?
Yeah.
In our, in our region is central region, right, with NACO? Okay, because I was looking at the, the agenda and where they're having those regional meetings and so forth, and I was, okay. I'm trying to figure out which one I need to be at. But I do plan to be at that 21st through 25th, or until the 25th. The other thing, Dory, do, do we need to verbalize again some of the dates with regard to the elections? We've got a primary on August 2nd, just for our audience that's out there viewing.
Sure, sure. So the next big date that's coming up is the close of the registration books, which will take place on July 12th. After that time, we can't book any new voter registrations. So that closes on July 12th. We will start mailing out ballots on the 13th, and then we will start early voting on July 18th, which is a Monday. We did push that early voting back just a little bit due to the redistricting delays. But, so we're going to start on Monday, the 18th with that. The other thing related to the elections is that we've got the candidate forums that the Chamber of Commerce has so graciously set up. I think it's really exciting that we're going to have those. They'll take place here in, in this chamber, Monday, the 11th, and Tuesday, the 12th. I think Monday is the commissioners' and Tuesday is our state representatives.
And both of those will start at 6:30 here.
At 6:30, uh-huh.
In this room, yep, that's correct, yep. Anything else?
I think that's it.
From a election standpoint? Okay, yeah, I was going to mention those forums, and, and Larry and Bob and I will be a part of the Monday one, and then the House Rep districts of 122 and 123 will be on the, on Tuesday, so. Oh, so anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned till next Monday at 8:30, and primarily, we'll be working on budget. We may do some additional conversation about our goal-setting objectives, but the primary focus will be on the budget. We are adjourned.